Good evening. I'd like to call the order. Regular council meeting of the City of Satellite Beach, January 23, 2013, approximately 7:00 PM. Please join me in a moment of silence and the pledge.
Pledge, ladies and gentlemen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberation and justice for all.
Agenda item number three, a special presentation. Carrie, Louise.
Ms. Louise has been with our Recreation Department for 22 years. She retired January 1st. We're going to cry. She retired January 1st of 2013. We're already missing her. Some of you may have met Kathy, who took her place, but really, nobody can ever feel for shoes. We'd like to take a moment to recognize Louise's 22 years of service of our city by giving her this plaque. And it reads... Retirement Award of Excellence, presented to Louise Stevenson, Recreation Program Specialist. Thank you for your 22-year contribution of time, knowledge, and talent. Satellite Beach citizens and staff appreciate the difference you have made to our community. Best wishes for a happy retirement, dated January 1st, 2013. Thank you. This is what this camera's got all the diagnostic pictures and we make very... All right, now we'll try again. Thank you. And then I have another deck to my screen. Camera on. All good retirements should start out with a buddy here in the world. So to that end, we have a special deck for Louise. And appropriate for, I'm curious, about anything in time. Actually bought that six years ago. She'll retire someday, it'll be funny.
Steve, thank you.
Yeah. Steve Hedley, I'm a resident. Let me get halfway set up here. If you turn to page, what I'm showing is page 18 in your packet, the item agenda that you're going to be talking about tonight is a code change from the PZAB board. Right above that, though, there is a, as part of the notes from this packet, from the PZAB, is a note to change two parts of the city code on free speech signs and electioneering signs. That was brought up last council, and because of a variety of things, that got pushed. Heck, we had an election. I'd like to see that brought back up. It's been four or five months now, and I'd like to see that readdressed. The number of signs, electioneering signs, a person can have in their front yard, as well as so-called free speech, where I can say Frank Cattino has the coolest bald head in the world, or something like that. You know, I'm just, whatever I want. It needs to be addressed. People do have certain rights to espouse a view, and I'd like to see that brought back or scheduled at some point in time.
Thank you. Jeff, make another that for us.
This, can we get an update from the city attorney? Because I know, Jim, you were working on that, correct? The sign, freedom of speech?
I mean, we, everything just kind of stopped at the time, so I haven't done anything further. I was waiting for it to be brought back up at the last council, and then it would be brought out as a whole package at the time that we did it. Jeff will arrange it and talk about it. Thank you, Steve.
Any other citizens' comments? Hearing none. Bring it back to agenda item number five, citizen council comments. Lorraine, would you like to start?
We have been mentioning the capital improvements plan, and at the last meeting, we talked about the, that, back in the 90s, a capital assets planning committee had been formed to come up with a short and long-term capital improvement plan. And this is the special edition BeachCaster that someone I know wrote for the city, and it has a lot of the details and an explanation about the capital improvements plan that was come up with at that time. In addition, in my files, I found a report, 1995 report from that committee, as well as a 1987 report. And I believe at the last meeting, council asked the staff to try to find those documents. So that's the start on that. And we've had the stormwater workshop, and just happened to have a special edition BeachCaster that came out in 1997 by someone that I know who wrote it. And that also gives a good explanation of where we've come, and we have come a long way with our stormwater program. But I think it's useful information to, when you're moving forward, to see where you've come from, and that document certainly gives a good explanation of that. That's all I have for now.
Thank you. Councilwoman Dean?
I'm here, babe.
Just one request, Mr. Mayor. I had an opportunity to speak earlier with Jeff Pearson, our city manager, regarding an agenda item, on the salary survey and all that process, and I'd just like to know if it'd be possible to put that on an agenda item in the near, very near future.
Sure. Jeff, what do we stand on that? Is that a next agenda? Or is it going to take...
We have probably 75% of the background done, and we are in a real strength of currents. We should be ready to prepare a basic report on what we've got, what it would cost, you know, things for the cost of...
On the February 6 meeting?
Yes, sir. Okay.
I'd like to add some information to that. I was looking at the Florida League of Cities website, and they were talking about salary surveys, and they also were saying that municipalities could do those through information available through the Florida League of Cities and without charge. So that's, we're just looking at Florida League of Cities website and clicking on the right buttons and seeing what you can pursue with that.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, and we'll put that on...
Actually, I'd like to comment on the Florida League of Cities webpage. We actually tried to do that in the past, and there are no criteria that meet our cities, so it wouldn't spit out any salaries back to us. You can try again, but I just wanted to let you know that we've already pursued that.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Along with the mayor and the vice mayor and Councilwoman Dean, and I attended the school board meeting last night, and I have to tell you that I was not impressed with the way that they handled the 500 to 600 people that were in the room at the start of the meeting. They didn't take the public hearing until the last agenda item, and it didn't start until after 9 o'clock from a meeting that began at 5:30, and I thought that was a tremendous disappointment to the people that came with their children and the people that were there to hear, you know, the issue. And by the time they got to that issue, there were probably 60 to 80 people maybe in the whole room, because all the other people had left. And I thought that was an insult to the people that took their time to come to that meeting to listen to the issues, and it was really disappointing to me, and I did state that when it was our turn to speak on Seapark, which didn't come until 10:25 in the evening from a 5:30 meeting. So you can let your school board members know. I know Amy is our school board member, and she was definitely, you know, looking at doing it earlier, but there's other members of the school board that have an agenda, and it's really disappointing to see that, you know, they're moving in the direction of probably closing these four schools. I did meet with Andy Ziegler on Friday evening, prior to the last Friday evening, and talked to him about, you know, his analysis of it, and he's kind of like the swing vote, from what I see at the school board. And I think it's going to come down to maybe some new ideas that they can come up with. They talked about debt refinancing last night, which they looked at, you know, a $6 million figure from debt refinancing. They can't refinance all the debt. All they can refinance is certain portions of it that have lead times on when they, the debt turns out. So a couple other people stood up in the presentations that were given for the other three schools and identified some other areas of savings. So it's going to come down to the school board, you know, making a decision on the information that was passed out last night. And, you know, they're looking for people to advocate on their behalf with legislators also, and I kind of touched on that last night, that they did a poor job of letting the people know what the issues were, so that they could talk to their local legislature members when they were here in Brevard County. And now that they're in Tallahassee, you don't have their ear the same way that you have it when they're home. The other thing I wanted to say is, I think these two documents here, if we can put these on the website for people to be able to look at, I mean, you know, it's nice that we did to see them, but I think if you're going to look at where we came from and where we might possibly be going, if we can get these on the website, I think it's, people might want to look at them. That's all I have.
Thank you. I also attended, as Tom said, the school board meeting. I can promise you, we will not be here at 11:30 tonight. Jeff got out of there somewhere after 12:15 last night at the, John, excuse me, got out of there. Concurrence was one of the issues brought up. I think, I still think it's very confusing. John's doing some research for us. He is going to a meeting on January 30th, and we will have that as an agenda item for February 6. The figures that we were handed last night, that we had 1,935 units that we could build, isn't totally true, because it has to do with the school area, and it includes a good portion of Cocoa Beach. So we really need to find out where we stand there concerning the concurrence, and John's going to handle that for us. That's all I have.
So Mayor, I do have one thing. My town hall meeting is tentatively set up for February 5th or 7th, so you're all welcome to attend. Unfortunately, I wondered where the month of January went, and we had 10 meetings in 17 days, 17, you know, days. So I looked at the calendar, I'm like, sorry, so it's pushed out to the first week of February.
Let's do this, then. Is it okay with councils, we all drop our meetings back one month?
Sure.
I don't think we need two town hall meetings in a month, and we did have a short month in January. I was the February one, and if it's okay, I'm not sure who has March, but I think we, if it's okay, we'll drop it. We just adjust our schedule a month. Thank you. Anything else from council?
Can we just make sure we know when we're supposed to do it?
Right, we'll get that redone. City attorneys' report.
Hi, I'm Austin.
Acting city managers' report.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. At the last meeting, resident John Hock brought forward a concern about financing issues, where they thought there was a discrepancy between one kind of association and another. John Stunt went and met with Mr. Hock, and he did affirmation from the homeowners association to come up to help us on the issue. And they spoke and made a lot of clarifications. There was actually three different issues there that he was talking about, and two of them, I think, were resolved pretty quickly and pretty easily to everyone's satisfaction. The only one that's still lingering is how they're going to enclose an electrical area, but they're working on it. The homeowners association with that resident that was here, John's been working with them and several other people as far as the fire marshal and things. So I suspect there'll be a resolution to that, but it was taken care of in the next couple of days after the resident brought it up, and things are moving along with that just fine. Mr. Mayor, you had asked me to indicate where the funds would be coming from to pay Colin Banzinger and Associates, and I spoke to Brenda, the finance director, and with the difference in salary between the previous interim city manager, the money that, in mine, along with other salary positions that were not filled, there will be more than enough money in the salaries item to pay Mr. Banzinger without having to take it from any other place. It's money that will be there, and so it'll be coming from the salaries.
Thank you.
You also had mentioned about wanting to have the ability of the council members, when they're making board appointments, to be able to have an attendance. And I believe in the packet is the form that will be used by the each board. They'll report it back to City Hall, if I'm saying this right, and they'll report it back to City Hall, and then there'll be a, like a spreadsheet kept where, just a check mark of who came, something along those. And it'll be, it'll be an easier way for us to be able to get that to you as far as the attendance for the boards. It's, it's just about finalized, so it'll start coming to you whenever you need it. It'll be available. And the last thing I have was, and it just came in, I didn't have it in here when I wrote the executive summary, but the dedication for the Michael P. Crati sign, looks like it's going to be February 1st at 5:00 PM. We've checked with Mr. Crati, and that works for him. It's going to be a basic unveiling type of thing with a quick dedication. Maybe the, you know, the mayor and a couple people say a few words, Mr. Crati maybe say a few words, unveil the sign, some very light refreshments. You know, I don't suspect it being a real long thing, being the fact that it gets dark around 6:15 or so. And Mr. Crati seemed to be perfectly fine with it. Carrie had set it all up. She seems good with it. It's in keeping with tradition, so that's what we're looking at.
February 1st, that's a Friday, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Day 5.
Day 5, yes, ma'am. And that's all I have, sir.
Thank you very much. Moving on to agenda number eight, presentation by the fire department on funds raised for breast cancer awareness. Steve?
Sure, why not? I love it. Well, great day for us, and let me give you a little background. The fire department, for several years, has done some T-shirt sales, if you will. You see the pink shirts for breast cancer awareness and other types of things. And over the years, the proceeds that we received from them have gone to the Susan V. Cohen Foundation. Cancer has touched almost every corner of our fire department in the last year, through family members, some of our own employees, wives, et cetera. And so this year, we decided to, instead of doing a national proceeds to them, to locate a local foundation that supports breast cancer awareness, and basically, money's raised locally, kept locally. And so with that, we, through Eric Tippins here, who was our firefighter who led the charge on this entire T-shirt project, along with the Satellite Beach Reserve firefighters who gave the seed money to start the initial purchase of the shirt, what we'd like to do is pray, and Sherry Palmer, and I'm so sorry.
It's all right, Noretta Hough.
And they're from Breast Friends, and what we'd like to do for an opportunity here is that through October, November last year, we did our sales, and Eric did a lot of the work, and we weren't able to raise much, just $700 for you guys as our proceeds for this, and we'd like to present this to you and say thank you very much for everything you guys do and supporting your cause.
Wow, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom, thank you, all your help to your staff, and appreciate it, and definitely has touched many of us, and thank you very much for the help. Moving on to agenda item number nine, discuss, take action on engine for Recreation Department vote. Carrie?
Thank you. I'm putting this for Samson's Island, it's only adjustable by boat. Our engine broke in August of 2012. We had it running twice in a row, for one occasion at a time. We've been hopping on the boat for the rain control for the last couple of times, but we've not been able to do adequate maintenance out there, as well as take no visitors out there since August. So time to address that problem in a solid way. I proposed purchasing a 40 Yamaha, put that on the existing pontoon boat. We do have a bid from the state government bid pricing, so it's the lowest we're going to get anywhere. There's a three-year warranty with it, and there's a special until the end of January that extends that warranty an additional two years at no additional charge. It's a Yamaha special. So what I'd like to do is have y'all take a look at that. The Samson Island Committee had $5,000 in their fiscal year budget. They pledged $2,000 of that towards the purchase of the engine, as well as they received $374 in donations, some from the Women's Club, thank you very much, and some from an Eagle Scout, who did a project out there and had some additional funds that he raised that he didn't use on his project. So we have, Samson's Island Committee has $2,374 to pledge towards the cost, and we would be asking the council to pick up the difference.
Thank you. Direct the council for discussion.
Good.
Just one thing, Carrie, you might want to, just so everybody knows, update on what happened with, why the boat's not in on this process as well. I mean, you originally wanted a boat and a motor. What happened with the boat?
Love to have a boat and a motor. We do have the opportunity, I believe, if I do a little bit of checking in, to request a grant from the Florida Inland Navigational District to purchase a boat. Don't know whether we would be awarded that or not, but the process begins in February with some preliminary indications that we're going to be submitting a grant, and ends in October with the award of the grant. So we believe our boat will hold up until then. The engine is broken more so than the boat, so if we can follow that lead and to try to get the boat, we've got to get something, and $5,000 and some dollars is a whole lot better to spend right now than $30,000 for a new boat with the engine.
Bottom line, Mr. Mayor, they've been really working this issue, trying to come up with ideas, and this seems to be a viable one. Their team really supports this, so I think it would be appropriate to move that forward.
Okay. Comments from council?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
In front of you, you do have the capital asset part, portion of the budget, and the question I have is, there is only $2,168 in reserves. Where does the rest of the money come from?
I talked to Brenda about this issue. She brought it into the budget and looked at it and asked where the capital assets was the place to come from, and she said there was no problem, there was money in there to do that. So I don't know, as far as the breakdown, I saw her, but I don't know if she's still here as far as the breakdown in reserves, but Brenda didn't seem to have any problem with it coming out of there, so unless there's a particular place, you know, I can, I'll verify it, but that's the, that's all I need to come out of.
Okay, because I, and it has nothing to do with the boat engine or the boat itself, but when it says special impact, I really would like to see what line item that money is coming from.
Yeah.
We get in this situation all the time. I mean, is it coming out of the $4,000 for, from recreation that's going to be used for the computers and software? And as you all know, because a lot of you attended the budget meetings, I was adamant about increasing those reserves for capital assets, larger purchases such as the boat engine and the boat repair, and then they took $4,000 and just arbitrarily put it in each department for computers and software. So I would really like to see where the money is coming from, from now on.
That was something we brought up the last time, that we wanted to see when finances are involved in any of these issues, that we see where they're coming from.
Yeah, we just didn't break down the specific, it's capital assets, but we didn't break down specifically what part of capital assets.
Changes from your department, if it's purchased through the Recreation Department, and you transfer funds from another department, then it, you know, it needs city council approval for that transfer, so it's just, I really would like to see where the line item, the money.
Yeah, she had it when we, when we discussed it, and I'll find out.
Okay. And that's why I asked you guys to have that section of the capital.
Any more motion?
Let me go here. Any other discussion?
Just going to make a motion.
Go ahead.
Move to authorize $3,226 for an outboard engine, including rigging for the rec department boat.
Motion by Councilwoman Gottes, second by Councilwoman Montanaro. Further discussion from council?
I, you know, I think we need to be able to get people out there. Public works needs to go out there. I mean, this is, it's a crucial element in transporting people. I know in November, Gil Sherrell was here from Aquatic Plants of Florida, and Gil is a guy that has been instrumental in the program that we have with the seed exchange for plants, and, you know, he wanted to go out there, and we wanted to try and get out there, and we weren't able to, so, you know, we need to get this thing fixed. One thing I can say is, because we definitely want to be prudent in when we're spending money, this is a pretty fabulous deal, a real fabulous deal on it. It's a 40-horse. I was kind of talking to Carrie why that over a 25. Smaller engine, you're going to burn out so fast, because it's always working so hard. It's just not the right particular engine for that application. I know this price well, know it's come from, with the labor of putting it on and so forth, and the warranty. The warranty, just the two years of warranty, of extra warranty, would cost you an additional $900 on this particular engine. And some of the parts on these new engines, the fuel pump, it's a $900 replacement value, and they do go, believe me. So I think this is a very, very good price on this, and think it'll help us out. Hearing no more comment from council, I'll just open it up for citizens' comments.
Steve Osmer, citizens of Satellite Beach. I'd just like to say also, I really like this. My son and I have taken the boat numerous times out there, and matter of fact, one of the things that he did as a community service for school projects was that we went out there and he got to pick up trash and clean and help out there. So there's also that aspect of, you know, we do have students, something like that, in community service, and they get to go out there, and the city gets a benefit for them going out there and doing that also. So I think it's a very worthwhile thing. As I've done it myself, my son and I have been out there many times, and it's a very good thing for Satellite Beach, it's something we brag about.
Thank you. Any further citizens' comments? Hearing none, bring it back to council. Any further comments?
Mr. Mayor, just one, just one correction. The boat motor is purchased before March 31st, you get the two, so we're not on a weak deadline before we get that extra two, two-year warranty.
Thank you. Any other comment from council? Hearing none. Loretta?
Councilwoman Dean?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hough?
Yes.
Yes. Agenda item nine passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. Moving on to agenda item number 10, discuss, take action on a letter requesting an extension for a comment period on numeric nutrition criteria rules.
Yes, sir. The City of Satellite Beach is requesting that the Environmental Protection Agency extend the comment period proposed for the Phase 1 rule and Phase 2 rule by a minimum of 30 days, as we don't have enough information to make a decision. Really, that's all we're asking for, is just extend the comment period so we can, we can respond. And this is, was discussed at the Stormwater meeting on January 16th, as it relates to TMDLs, to the total maximum daily loads, and letters in the packet.
Thank you. Counselor?
I have some corrections on the letter. The salutation should start with "dear," and the first paragraph at the top of the second page, bottom line, last full line of that first paragraph, the verb should be "have," H-A-V-E, not "has." Have prompted us. The last paragraph, the second to the last line, after the word "asserts," the word should be "support," not "supports." And at the top of the next page, on the very first line, IT apostrophe S, there should be no apostrophe, it should be ITS.
Okay. Thank you for those corrections.
Listen to approved letter with the corrections as outlined by Councilwoman Gottes.
I have a motion by Council Vice Mayor Breimer, second by Councilwoman Montanaro. Any further discussion from council? Hearing none, I'll open it up for public comment. Hearing no public comment, bring it back to council.
Just one question, is there a possibility they don't grant, they don't have to grant the extension?
Yes.
Very true, yeah.
Just wondering. Just wondering.
Any further comments from council? With the corrections taken? Lenore?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion unanimously passes. Moving on to agenda item number eleven, a public hearing. Discuss, take action on ordinance number ten sixty-seven. Jim?
An ordinance of the city of Satellite Beach, Befard County, Florida, amending section thirty-one dash four A, Satellite Beach Code regarding composition of the Community Redevelopment Agency Board, amending section thirty-one dash seven B, Satellite Beach Code regarding quorum and minimum voting requirements for Community Redevelopment Agency Board, amending section thirty-one dash seven D regarding council participation, creating new sections thirty-one dash five and thirty-one dash eight, Satellite Beach Code establishing a Community Redevelopment Agency Advisory Committee and membership qualifications, composition, terms, quorum, rules, and meeting notice requirements, terminating terms of non-city council members on current Community Redevelopment Agency Board, providing severability, providing an effective date, and it's the second reading, ordinance number ten sixty-seven.
Thank you. Do I have any comments from council?
Yeah, I do. Is it necessary that we have the word board in there? It's really just the Community Redevelopment Agency. I mean, I think that word should be, it doesn't, so I put Florida statute one sixty-three, and it may lead to confusion because we do have an advisory board. And then, I'm not sure on section two D, why we need to have the advertisement requirements in the ordinance.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand the last part.
Oh, on, uh, section two?
Right.
Page two, D, why we have to have the advertisement requirements in the ordinance?
I mean, well, I'm not, still not absolutely sure what the question is, but the original reason why this came up had to do with participation by council in discussions before the Redevelopment Agency Advisory Committee, and that's why the additional language was included in the title. But when we went through this, D ended up being more of a, just cleaning up a couple of clerical things in that, but the participation, it was actually in thirty-one dash eight, so that's where that actually came out. I don't know if I answered your question, but that's what, that's what, there was some verbiage that was just massaged in D, and that's what, that's what's in D now.
Because really, all you're doing is creating the Community Redevelopment Agency and designating the city council as that agency. You don't need the advertisement issue, information in there. And then, on section three, you're creating the Community Redevelopment Agent, well, Agency Advisory Committee.
Right.
So, I think that could be taken out, and I think it should just, with the change on it, the board should be taken out, just the Community Redevelopment Agency.
Where does that put us? Do we need to have that in or out, Jim? I'm going to ask that to you.
I didn't bring the statute book with me. For some reason, I may be wrong, but my recollection is, is that they actually talk about the agency board, because they talk about them as board of commissioners.
They call them commissioners in the statute, not a board, so it probably needs to be either just a Community Redevelopment Agency or Community Redevelopment Agency Commissioners. And I'll have it with me, but I did look at it earlier. It's a statute.
Yeah, I don't have any problems with leaving board in there, and also the part about advertising. I do have a question. At the top of page two, paragraph D, we said that it'll be advertised at least three days by posting a notice at City Hall, and I'm wondering why three days rather than normal twenty-four-hour requirement for?
Well, I think you need, also need to look at the, the Community Redevelopment Agency has bylaws, so that's why I'm saying that D is probably not necessary, because it has to coincide with the bylaws, and again, I'm going to ask that board be stricken from the ordinance.
Bylaws can be changed. The ordinance supersedes bylaws. Bylaws need to be brought into compliance with the ordinance. But my question is more basic than that. For every other kind of meeting that we have that I can think of, we have to give twenty-four hour notice. This is saying we need to give three days notice, and I'm not sure why the difference.
Well, I think, again, you have to be very careful what you're sitting, we're sitting at, the city council now, and the Community Redevelopment Agency develops their own bylaws. All we're doing via this ordinance is creating a Community Redevelopment Agency and designating the city council as the Community Redevelopment Agency.
I understand all that, and the bylaws can be adjusted if necessary. I'm asking a more basic question. Why are we requiring three days notice for a meeting?
I don't mean that it needs to be in the ordinance.
Ms. Deanen, I have the floor. Why do we need three days notice here instead of the twenty-four hour notice that we require for everything else? That's my basic threshold question. Is there anything in one sixty-three that requires three days notice?
I don't recall one or the other. I can go look it up. Somebody, if you want to go on to another agenda item, I can go look it up on the computer.
All right, then, let's go to section, right in the middle of the page, section thirty-one dash five in A. If you'll go down to one, two, three, four, the fifth line on the very far right, it says the city council may appoint two alternate members. I think that, I think we mean it shall appoint two alternates. And then, in paragraph D, that same page, where it defines engaged in business, says engaged in business means, says owning a business. On the last advisory committee board makeup, we had one member who actually owns, who owned commercial property. And so, I would like to insert, because I do think that constitutes engaged in business, but I think it needs to be clarified, so I would make it say engaged in business means owning a, insert here, commercial property for business.
And Ms. Beadle, I'm sorry, but this has to do with this. While you're looking up that, would you please look up what, under Florida statute one sixty-three, what the definition of engaged in business is?
And then, my same question about three days over in section four D, it's the same paragraph repeating. The three days notice, it's in section four, section thirty-one dash eight D delta, at least three days notice, and my question is, why isn't it twenty-four hours notice?
Well, again, I'm going to go back to the fact that all we're doing is creating the Community Redevelopment Agency as the city, the city council acting as that agency. So, the three-day issue is really, it can be stripping from this document, and I think it needs to say agency, not board, to coincide with Florida statute one sixty-three. And I would also like Mr. Beadle to look up the definition of what engaged in business is in the statute, because there are definitions in the statute.
Jim, you have that? Okay. Council wishes to take a break till he gets that, or continue?
Let's continue.
Let's continue. Let's move on to agenda item number thirteen.
The only thing, Mr. Mayor, you probably, and this is just a suggestion, you probably could do public comment on this, because the changes aren't material to the ordinance itself.
He comes back and it's done by then?
Because these aren't really material changes to the intent.
At this time, I'll open it up for public comment. Hearing no public comment, bring it back to council. Council wishes, move on to agenda item number thirteen.
Do we need him to read resolutions?
Well, I was going to have him come back, because this has something that's relevant to what he's doing right now.
Well, we look at something that's relevant.
You want to look at?
You could go on with that, and anybody can read that. Do you want me to read it?
No, I have no problem with that. I was just, since it was part of the?
The issues that are in the ordinance that he's looking at are not present in this resolution, so I can go ahead and see.
Okay, we'll move on to resolution number nine twenty-five, a resolution of the city of Satellite Beach, Befard County, Florida, declaring the city council to be the Community Redevelopment Agency Board, and establishing membership, providing severability, providing an effective date. Read of ordinance number nine twenty-five.
Resolution.
Resolution, excuse me.
Motion to approve resolution nine twenty-five.
Second.
Can I have a motion by Councilwoman Gott, second by Councilwoman Deanen? Any further comment from council? Open it up for public hearing? Hearing none, bring it back to council. Lenore?
Councilwoman Mott?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilwoman, who moved, is your second?
I moved.
You, Cheryl seconded.
Councilwoman Deanen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gott?
Yes.
Resolution nine twenty-five passes, five nothing. Move on to agenda item number thirteen.
I'm going to request that this item be tabled, because I would like the opportunity to work with the city manager, interim city manager and the staff regarding the site plan requirement. You should have in front of you our site plan section of the code, and in that, I mean, this is kind of like putting a Band-Aid on a wound that needs stitches. There's a lot of, in order to streamline this process, the entire site plan section of the code needs to be revisited.
What I'd like to see is let us go through the process if we decide that that's what we need to do. Deanen, Jim, you want to make a presentation?
Actually, I just can't remember the John.
John.
John and I talked about it, he can present it.
Any mayor and council members? On November nineteenth, the planning and zoning advisory board discussed changes to the site plan requirements, when a site plan would be required. Currently, thirty dash three oh two, it talks about when a site plan, a full site plan is required, where it's got to go through all the different boards, what boards are determined by, what kind of actions being taken. Sometimes it goes to CPAB, sometimes it goes to board adjustments, but it goes through various boards. But one of the issues is, is in the requirements for a site plan, any increase in gross floor area, parking, non-conformity for impervious area to increase, then it's got to go through a full site plan. So, the intent was to allow for minor improvements, minor improvements, such as a small, small addition to the building. Las Olas would have been a good example. That's one that recently went through the site plan process, two and a half, almost three months to do it, and it was just extending their lobby area, but it, it was an increase in gross floor areas, therefore it had to go through that process. The, allowing a ten percent increase in gross floor area without trying to site plan is something similar that other municipalities have done, to allow those minor improvements to be taken care of at a staff level. The requirements such as looking at impervious and parking and all those other requirements that you look at on a site plan, these are looked at irregardless. You know, whether you're putting in a driveway, in a house, whatever, you're looking, you're still looking at all those impervious areas, and you're still looking at the parking requirements. So, the requirements don't go away. They just simply roll back to a staff level versus going through these different boards.
Okay, thank you. Jackson, comments?
Say that again.
Which part?
The requirements don't go away.
Correct. For instance, if, let's use an example, the Las Olas one. They added a lobby. Had that lobby been looked at as, well, it is looked at as gross floor area. We also have to look at parking, and now, in the case of a lobby, you're not really increasing your tenants or things like that, so parking really didn't come into play, but it is still one of the things we looked at. When they increased that, or when they added that lobby, we also looked at the total impervious area on that property. Irregardless of whether or not it had to go a site plan, we still looked to make sure it didn't exceed that seventy percent. So, essentially, what I'm saying is, is we're looking at these things anyway. The difference is, is a site plan gets approved, in these cases, it was less than ten percent. The site plan would get approved at a staff level in two to three days versus two to three months.
Basically, what you're saying is, you look at the whole criteria that the land development regulations
Absolutely.
say need to be addressed when a site plan is changing.
Right.
And as long as it's under ten percent, you're still covering all of the stuff that normally P and Z would look at.
Right, and in truth, it's really staff that looks at those things.
Right, and all you're doing is making recommendations.
Yeah, and I'm putting it out there for them to, you know, question it, look at it, see if there's any additional comments on it. So, yes, absolutely, those things are being looked at irregardless of whether or not it goes through those boards or not.
Well, I'm all in favor of streamlining the process, and I believe we need an administrative approval process for the majority of the stuff that comes through Satellite Beach. But what I'm finding here, and I've read the entire planning, site planning section of the code, is that there's a lot of inconsistency. Only one section of the code was changed, and that was section thirty dash three point oh two, and a few words. So, if you go back, you'll find a lot of inconsistencies. The entire section really needs to be looked at, and again, it should be in front of you, the site plan section that references a community development director in the section, mandatory pre-op conference, which I don't think should be required, all landscape and irrigation should go to beautification. I think there should be a threshold for that, so it doesn't have to go to beautification. The building official, even though you're amending this section, shall, except for landscape and irrigation plans, send his recommendations to the planning and zoning advisory board, and that section of the code hasn't been amended through this process. So, and then, there's also minimum factors that aren't, haven't been addressed, and it just goes on and on and on, where if you read the code, you're going to be thrown back into the process even if you just make these corrections. I have seven site plans right now in administrative process in the local area. It's a great idea. It's still, you still have to meet the requirements of the land development regulations, but you have to make sure the code is there in sites. So, we really need a pre-op conference that may or may not be mandatory, an administrative site plan approval process, which is minor, and then, of course, major developments need to go through the full-blown process through beautification, planning and zoning, to the CRA, to the city council. And I would like the opportunity to work with, with staff to make sure that the entire section of the land development regulations are done properly, and of course, there's some extension or periods where the site plans expire, so I think they looked at one section, and it's really a very low threshold for an administrative approval. And I think, again, if you go back and look at the section of the code, you're going to find a lot of inconsistencies, where you're still going to be kicked into that process, which is, so we really need to look from a planning standpoint at revising this entire section of the land development regulations, which is Article Three Planning, Division One Site Plan.
Cheryl, if we approve this, this piece here tonight, just to get him to the point where he can?
I think the point is moved, to be honest. I think it's really not going to be advantageous that, to anyone coming in to do any development. It's really minimal, and I just think it, it won't take long. I mean, there's increased floor area by ten percent or five hundred square feet, I mean, that's not much. And I don't even understand why that would even have to go through this review. I just, I just think we need to look at the entire section as a whole, so it can be streamlined. And also, I can assist in coming up with the applications, such as the pre-op, a minor site plan that's administrative, major site plan, and things like that.
I don't have any problems with not proceeding with this. Frankly, I found the changes that were being suggested to be confusing. It seems to me that It seems to me that when we talk about deleting the requirement, the reference to the amount of impervious surface on the site, that to me says that we don't have to pay attention to that impervious surface requirement.
Well, there's underlying land development regulations that require it for any property within a zoning district.
I've got two microphones on here.
So that would apply...
Speak up, John.
Regardless of whether or not it goes to a site plan, the impervious area, which is what we were talking about, would apply for any property within a zoning district. You know, every zoning district has an impervious requirement, maximum impervious. In the commercial, which is what we're talking about, it's 70%. So even if it didn't go to a site plan, and there's a lot of projects that come through the city that don't have to go to a site plan, we still look at it for impervious.
It also talks about, as long as it, we've stricken the provision that it involves a non-conforming structure. I know that there are provisions elsewhere in the LDRs, I couldn't find them right off, but where you can't enlarge nonconformities. So what this does, it does what the LDR review committee spent so long working on. It creates, it will create inconsistencies with other parts of the LDRs. That was the biggest challenge of that committee, of that board, was to make sure that when you change something here, it didn't impact something over here, and if it did, then you had to deal with it over here, too. And that's why that process was so long and drawn out. As for Councilwoman Deanan's suggestion, I'm not sure that it's appropriate for council to be directing staff as to what the codes should say. You know, we formed a citizens committee for this a few years ago to do this very same thing. But it seems to me that this particular ordinance that we have before us tonight is a bit premature, and I too wonder if it has been thought through thoroughly in conjunction with other provisions within the LDRs for consistency.
Sure, sure. I understand your concern. I believe it has. The plan of zoning, we spoke about it very thoroughly. And again, those requirements is strictly where a site plan is triggered. You know, the other example you gave was a non-conforming structure. An example would be if there was a condo that was encroaching into the coastal construction control line. It technically is a non-conforming structure. Does that mean that it would have to go to a site plan because they were building a lobby on the west side? Not necessarily. The point being is, is just because it's a non-conforming structure should not be the basis for why it has to go to a site plan. You know, there are underlying regulations that are still in place that says you can't expand those non-conforming structures. Staff knows that. Staff has to look at that when they look at what type of improvement is going to be made. For instance, we know that if that encroachment is into the coastal construction control line, you could not do an addition that would expand on that nonconformity. But it wouldn't necessarily mean that you couldn't build a lobby on the west side of the building.
Okay. In the city manager's write-up, he referenced a minor change that allows staff to approve a site plan for a minor change. And who gets to define what a minor change is?
Well, I think we did define it there. A minor change is where the gross floor area is not increased more than 10% or the lesser of 500.
Okay, this is how you are defining a minor change, okay. So you feel that we're ready to proceed with this without causing problems within the rest of the LDRs?
Correct. I believe that there is not a conflict. However, to address Miss Deanan's comment, I think that there's more work to be done in that section. That it does need to be gone through more extensively at some point. This is certainly one of the first steps in expediting the permitting process to allow at least that door to be open enough to allow some of these small improvements to happen. And again, it's a work in progress, I think, the LDRs in general are. But certainly within the site plan requirements, and it's fairly extensive, some of it might need to be worked on.
Mr. Mayor, I certainly don't have any qualms with Miss Deanan's request to work on this with city staff, and I think John's kinda echoing that.
I'm not gonna direct them what to do. I'm just gonna provide the information. Again, in most, and I do have other land development regulations with me, and most of them, they define what a minor site plan is or administrative approval. And we really, we just can't put a Band-Aid on this one. We really need to address it, address it quickly, because when people come, the door needs to be open for business. And I'm offering my professional services. That's fine either way. But it is a big issue.
Let me finish what I was gonna say. I think of John, if you're willing, and we certainly have user services to take a look at this and take, you know, take no action at this time on this. Just bring it back to council.
I'd like to see it right the first time, where we need to make changes, bring it up to date.
When the changes are made, will they go back to P&amp;Z to have them look at it?
I would recommend that be the case, yes.
Yeah, and one other thing, too, I would hope that we could also include a waiver provision in the site plan, so that if there's a waiver from maybe one parking stall or something, or some kind of requirement, they do this successfully all over the state, that can be written into this section as well, so that they can come through a waiver process to deviate from the land development regulation slightly in lieu of doing a variance, which you need to have an undue hardship.
I'll move that we postpone consideration of ordinance number 1068 indefinitely.
Do we need to have a motion?
I think, I can just table it and just at a later meeting.
Table is not correct. It's a postponement.
You wanna postpone till a later date and time?
We're just not gonna take any action on this.
May I add to that? It sounds like where we're going with this is changes far beyond what is in this ordinance. So this ordinance may become obsolete.
But it's just not gonna get approved.
Yeah, it's just not going anywhere. All right.
Action, move on.
We've given John direction.
John's direction. Okay?
Yeah. Okay, we go back to... To 12. Okay. To address the issue about notice of meetings, reason for, I mean, I can just, you have council background. As indicated at the last meeting, the language that's in there now is basically just parroting what was in there before, the crack was dissolved before. Where it came up with three days, I have no idea, but that's where it came from. There is nothing in the statute that talks about having a minimum three-day notice prior to the meetings, to answer that question. As far as the issue regarding doing business or engaged in business, what is in here regarding crack is what the engagement business is as it relates to an appointed CRA board. So that's where that language came from. If council wants to... Because council is appointing the redevelopment agency advisory committee and establishing what the qualifications are to be a member of that committee, if they wanna change that definition as it relates to the committee, I don't believe that there is a prohibition from doing that, because this is something that the city council is creating, so they can create what the qualifications for membership are. Again, this is, where this definition came from is that basically it occurs what's in the statute now as if that was to be the agency itself. So that's not what we're dealing with now, so if you wanna massage it, that's, I don't see any problem in doing that. With respect to the use of the word "board," it doesn't matter legally, I don't believe, based on the statute. They do talk about Board of Commissioners. That generally relates to the, again, going back to the appointed CRA agency board. But they also talk in general and other places in the statute, and I didn't really spend a lot of time doing it because I didn't think that was something that I needed to really spend a lot of time on for this meeting. But if council wants to go back and look at it, that's fine. But there are other portions in 163 relating to the community redevelopment that talk about, they just talk about the agency board or commission. They kinda lump them all together, so it looks like, you know, I don't, you know, you could refer them to the agency, you can refer to them as a board, you can refer to them as a commission. So I don't know that there's any real difference as far as, it's a question of semantics on which council wants to call it. You know, so from a legal standpoint, I don't see any real issue regarding it. And I think that covered all the questions that council had asked about. Okay, so the only substantive change would be the one, would you recommend 24 hours, right?
I wouldn't put it that way. I'd say as required by law.
Yeah, that's what I'm telling you. You don't restrict yourself.
I know, it's required by law.
Okay.
And then I would prefer to on...
You're entitled to give less than 24-hour notice of...
Okay, so then these should be, said meeting shall be advertised as required by law, striking at least three days prior to said meeting.
Correct. By law, right?
Shall be advertised as required by law, continuing by posting a notice at City Hall.
Right.
And the same change would be made on page 3, 31-8D.
Correct.
And then to be, on D, to be honest, I would rather not get into determining what engaging in business is. If we can say what the qualifications are, that would probably, I don't know if there's a different way to word it, but engaging in business can be disputable. So if we want to say owning a business, practicing a profession, just list what the requirements are, I think it would be a lot clearer and concise.
How about if we just said owning a business or owning commercial property?
Yeah. Well, you could practice a profession without owning a business. I think it's important to have these qualifiers in here, because when I was reading it, the lawyer in me said, "Well, what do we mean by engaged in business?" And so then the next sentence went ahead and spelled it out. So I would keep what's there, but I would add owning a commercial property. By inserting, it means owning a, insert, "commercial property" or, and continuing with business. Practicing a profession, et cetera.
How does that feel on that?
I'm okay.
I'm uncomfortable with it.
Okay. Do you need a motion?
And then the other thing, you mean for that one change motion?
No, I'm just making everybody...
The other thing that I would change is back up, 31-5, a change made or shall appoint two alternate members.
Handle the word "board" on the...
We're not, we're leaving it at that.
I'll make a motion to...
Go ahead, you got it. I'm gonna go second.
To approve ordinance number 1067 with the changes that were outlined.
Second, I have a motion by Councilman Montanaro, seconded by Vice Mayor Breimer. Any further comments from council? Hearing none, I'll open it up for citizens' comments. Hearing no citizens' comment, bring it back to council. Lenore? Okay.
Yes?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Deanan?
Yes.
Yes. It passes. It is five after. Let's take a short recess, ten minutes, and we'll come back for 14.
What'd you say?
Can I take a recess?
It's so... It's harder than saying that.
That's all right. You can't hear us, something...
It's like I'm in my own little world, my own little place, terrible way.
Reconvene the council meeting, moving on to agenda item number 14. Jeff?
After request of city council 2012, staff was requested to prepare request or proposal for planning services with the allocation of $15,000. The scope of the RFP was to obtain contracted services at an hourly rate as an as-needed basis for general planning services to include CPAB, PZA, CRA, and all general planning. Two bids were received, Kramer &amp; Little and LaRue Planning and Management Services. Staff reviewed the bids, checked the references, did the research, and scored the bids. And after discussion with the references and scoring with the both bidders, it's staff recommendation that, or it's staff's bidding process that LaRue came out ahead of the other bidder. And they have required, met all the requirements of the RFP and that we recommend that they be awarded the RFP that was put out.
How many people were on the evaluation team?
The, John and I. Actually, no, it was John, I'm sorry. I looked at it after they evaluated it.
The bids were opened up in front of the interim city manager, Ann Samuelson, myself, and city clerk, Lenore Alexa.
How many people were on the evaluation team?
It was just myself. I was tasked with doing the in-depth evaluation. It was opened up by the three of us, and there was just a cursory review to make sure that everything was there, more so for completeness. And then it was turned over to me to call the references, look at the information in the package, and score it.
Any more comments? Yeah, you're up.
I actually have more. This was the former interim city managers, if I can get it right?
Infirm.
Former interim city managers initiative. When Mr. Carty was here, we sat down and spoke extensively about the amount of people that we have in our building zoning planning department, and it really is an issue. There are only three people. John?
Yeah, we have the other one, so...
Okay, so, you know, Mr. Stone, who's the building official, the zoning official, Rob, who is plans examiner, or the code enforcement?
I wear a lot of hats.
Okay, well, whatever. And then Tanya. And so we really are, when it comes to being business-friendly and encouraging people to come into the community and get through our process, really short-changed. And so what we had talked about was really establishing a community development department and then getting a planner on staff to assist with these processes, because they are really understaffed and underbudgeted in that department. Not sure how we ended up here. It was a battle that I argued against because we really need face time when people come into the community and want to do any kind of development, including even go through the site plan process. If John goes on vacation, we have no one. We have no one to fill that void. It's really not an ideal situation when you're talking about community development, and especially now with our new redevelopment plan. Even though it's in the redevelopment area, those items are still gonna have to go through our city process, and we need to be prepared to do that. So the vision really originally was not to have a consultant on call, but to have somebody in that department who could have face time with the people and hold their hand through the process to get them through as quickly as possible. And I know he was tied up with a school board meeting last night, and again, probably tied up all day on the concurrency issue, and if someone walks in the door, we need to get them through the process as quickly as possible. It needs to be a one-stop shop. With that, I'm not in favor of choosing either of these firms. I really think we need to look at hiring a planner part-time that is in that building.
with the Comprehensive Planning Advisory Board, and some other things as called upon. His reputation is excellent, and everyone that I have spoken to about him, staff, citizen board members, all speak highly of him, and talk about how easy he is to work with and how knowledgeable he is. The need for that planning consultant has not gone away. They, last council went out with this RFP for another planning consultant. We need to address this RFP and wrap it up and close it out. We, I think that there are needs for additional talent and skills in our building slash development slash zoning department. But in the meantime, Mr. LaRue is qualified to continue to help us. I did look at both of the proposals that were submitted to include from Kramer and Little, and I think they have an impressive resume. He is a young man, and I'm not going to hold that against him. And I, I think that he clearly has a bright future in this line of work. However, Mr. LaRue has demonstrated that he has the skills that we need. And so, I would be in favor, oh, and I know I started to, to say that when the new city manager comes on board, one of the things that he or she is going to need to do is look at our staffing, look at the positions we have, the duties that are assigned to them, and to make some recommendations to council as to how our city government should be organized and staffed. And at that time, we can be looking at permanent employees coming on board. But we're not there yet, and, and we have a temporary need. So, until we are ready to hire a full-time employee, I think that the wise course of action is to hire Mr. LaRue to be our consultant. He also has experience in CRA matters, and we're going to be looking at someone to take on CRA responsibilities. And he brings a whole gamut of skills with him that we need to help us out. So, I would be in favor. In fact, I will make a motion that we hire Mr. LaRue's company to be our planning consultant. He will continue, as he stated in his scope of work in his proposal, he will continue with the work that he has been doing for the Comprehensive Planning Board. And also, he will fill this as-needed basis tasking. And so, that would be my motion to accept the contract that he proposed. I do see that-
Next agenda item, kills with it.
Oh, okay. So, I'll stop there. So, that would be my motion to hire him, and to close out the RFP process and send the other firm a letter telling them of council's decision.
Motion by Councilwoman Gott, do I have a second?
We have two different agendas. We're doing two things at once, sir.
Well, right now, we're doing fourteen.
Yeah, fifteen is the actual contract.
Oh, well, can we take both these items together? Because they really are-
I was talking to Jeff on this when we, because the RFP is different-
You're going to run into an issue of, you're going to-
But I'm trying to combine both of them because we only need one planner. We don't need two planners.
What we're getting is, if we really look at it, we're basically getting two for one here. I, I like what you say, we need someone in-house, and I agree there. I just don't think we have the funds right now. And when we hire the new, you know, permanent city manager in the next year's budget, this only costs us when we use it. So, if we don't use it-
I'm going to second the motion.
Okay. That's, I have a motion by Councilwoman Gott, a second. But Councilman Montanaro on agenda item number fourteen.
And fifteen.
And fifteen.
Combining the two.
I don't, I, I think you really need to award this bid separately. You're going to, you could get into an issue, and then do the contract separately.
Let's do, let's do fourteen first, since they're, both of them are separate. It's not together. And then we'll, we'll take fifteen and do the same.
Make a motion to approve the recommendation of staff on granting-
Yeah, well, that, that motion applies.
Okay, so that's the motion?
It still applies.
I'll, I'll second the motion to-
A motion by Councilwoman Gott, second, by Councilman Montanaro, to approve the recommendation of staff.
And I would like to say, you know, if you haven't, haven't read the paper today, there's an article in the newspaper about property values. And what I see is, and I agree, I think we need someone in-house. I don't think we're there yet. But I think that as we start being able to bring more money into the city, we can start looking at some of the positions. And it's not just their department that's deficient. But I, but I do believe that they need help there, and I think this is something that we can get short-term if we need it. And I, I think we need to address it when the budget hearings come up back in, you know, down in August. Because I think we're going to look at a different valuation of the property in the city. I think we're going to see an increase. I think we're going to have some additional revenue coming in. And I think we need to start addressing some of these positions in the city that we deem to be needed.
Well, I, I, I agree. But I have to tell you, I have a real issue with a one-man evaluation team. Number one. Because it says a team shall do an evaluation. And I'm also concerned about the distance. It's, it's remote. So, if we have a new city manager coming on, why not delay it and let them come in and evaluate and determine what, what the issues are? And I have no issue with Mr. LaRue continuing on with the Comprehensive Planning Advisor and renewing his contract. I just don't understand why.
Well, it's basically two for one. We use them as we need them. And then when we get the new city manager permanently filled, and we go through budget, then he will give us recommendations on how to staff our departments and what we need. We may end up with a city manager who's strong in, you know, in one of these areas that he may, they may not want to use him. I mean, they may find other alternatives, whoever the city manager happens to be. But at least we're putting something in place that between now and then, we've, we've got someone to fall back on if we need somebody.
I think we saved like fifteen thousand dollars here?
Well, that would be the maximum that we would be spending for planning services. Minimum would be if, you know, nothing comes about that we have to use it for. Zero. So, I mean, you know, you got to put it in context of when we went through this process. It was right in the middle of the budgets, and we were struggling with cutting the amount of poopy bags we had at the rec. department. And that was truly one of the things we were looking at. And so, the planner was difficult to get in there at all. And the best way to get it in there was on this as-needed basis. Understanding that we truly do want somebody in there full-time and, or at least part-time. And I, and I see that vision, too. I, I just don't think financially we were able to justify it.
Let me open it up for citizens' comment, please. Any citizens' comment on this agenda item number fourteen? Here are none, bring back to council. Any further discussion? Lenore?
No. Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilwoman Deacon? Excuse me, go off, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes four to one, on to agenda item number fifteen. Discuss take to action on city planning consulting services by LaRue Planning, Management and Servicing.
I think number fourteen took care of that.
Yeah.
He will be our planning consultant.
Great.
Oh, I got to get to that.
And this, I believe, is where he had submit, submitted the, yeah, this is where he had submitted a proposed agreement.
Yes.
And-
I need a motion to accept the proposed agreement.
Yeah, I have a question. In several places, you talked, talked about, I'm talking to you, Mr. LaRue, you talked about traveling and travel expenses. And my question is, is your travel time charged, or is that included in your fee for a meeting?
Meeting is included with the travel time.
Okay.
There's no separate charge for travel.
Oh, yes, okay. And in page four, number four of his proposed contract, the last sentence is the project manager for the city, manager for the city shall be in that left blank, and I think that should be the city manager for now.
Yes. On four?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll amend my second, that, have we had, do we have a motion?
No, we haven't had a motion.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve the contract with LaRue and Associates.
As amended.
As amended.
I have a motion by Councilman Montanaro, seconded by Councilman Breimer.
And then just for the record, I want to, I want to state that I have no issue with Mr. LaRue continuing on with the Comprehensive Advisory Planning Board and, and a contract with him. But I do have a problem, again, with this being, as a planner, as a band-aid approach to a problem that really needs to be solved in this community, and the travel distance that it takes for him to be here in person.
Like I said before, I agree with you. But right now, financially, we're not in that position. We don't have a city manager. And at that time, you know, we can address that when the budget comes up. And I'm sure we're going to be filling other positions, too, as seen needed by that manager and the council. So, I think we're all in agreement that we need help in that particular department. So, you know, sure, the Warren budget, that's definitely going to come up. Any other discussion by council? Let me open it up for citizens' comments. Here are none, bring it back to council. Lenore?
Councilwoman Deacon?
Yes.
Councilwoman Deacon?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Yes, of course.
Yes. Motion passes. Moving on to agenda item number sixteen. The Beachcaster?
Yes, sir. The, really, this agenda item is, is really for staff direction. It's been talked about that the Beachcaster wants to be revived and redone. But there's been so many discussions, there's been volunteers that have, that have come in and out. There's been discussion on what should be included, how often it should come out, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And really, we as staff just need to have some direction from the council as what they want to see, when they want to see it. And then we need to address how we're going to get it done. There's budgeted money that, that the previous council had put in there for the Beachcaster. But it's just, depending on what the qualifications and what the timeframe is that the council comes up with, we would need to find out who, how we're going to get it done, whether staff can do it or not. So, before we get any, you know, start putting together a Beachcaster without getting any direction, I just think the first step is to, is to talk about it, and see where we want to go, and then try to put something together that meets your needs.
If I'm not mistaken, there's approximately twenty thousand dollars was set aside-
Yes, sir.
-in this year's budget.
That is correct.
Is that correct?
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay. Council comments here?
I'll just go back to, to just, back to December, and I had a conversation with the citizen who asked me to ask council, just to throw this out there, it's not, not my position on this, but just to throw this out there. Do we really need a Beachcaster? She wanted to know from that ten-thousand-foot level, do we, as a city, need this Beachcaster? If so, then that sets the precedent for the rest of the discussion as to what goes in there. Have we, have we got enough feedback to say this has got to be in our city, it has to be bought back, and that sort of thing? So, I'll just throw that out there to start with.
I mean, my feeling on that is there's a lot of ways to do this. I mean, we're always talking technology. I hear people talking technology out there. We have a website. Not saying everybody has a computer, but I would venture to say that's more of a majority that does. To me, I can't see why we can't, you know, have a good one online and wean people off the printed one. And maybe we print a couple, and then start weaning them and say, as of a certain date, we are going to start only having it online. So-
Well, you know, I actually am at the point where I have no opinion on this, because we have beat this Beachcaster down the past year. And it, it does, though we have the staff to technologically take the time to update it, because the CRA webpage is, is, is really outdated. That's, that's the other question. We tried to put it on the web, and then everyone said, "No." Everybody had to have it mailed. We tried to create a mailing list. No, that's not good enough. Everybody had, I mean, it, it really, I'm going to, I think I might stay out of this one. I'm exhausted from this one.
I, I looked at cost here.
There really, there really has not been any data, no photos, nothing exciting that has been on the webpage or out there. And it's, it's really kind of sad. It's really kind of sad.
Well, but that's what we're here for, to try to make this better, and put the information out there. So, it's up to us to see how we want to go. Looking at the cost we have here in front of us of the ones we've done, if you look at the cost per page, at one time, we did a twelve to sixteen page. And I just divided, I said fourteen into the cost. It came out to two hundred and fifty-three dollars a page. We spent thirty-five hundred dollars. We spent on the second one, February, March, we put out four pages, and it cost us five hundred dollars, and it had no photos in it. Okay? So, that one, to me, wasn't worth its money. Then September, October, we did eight pages, black and white, with photos, both by staff and volunteers, and we spent two hundred and ninety-one dollars a page. And it came in at twenty-three hundred dollars. I think people want information that's up to us on getting that information to them. And I still believe eventually we need to work towards making this an online type of a program. We don't need to whack anymore trees, and, you know, it's just, that's the way the future's going. People sat in the audience for a long time and said, you know, "Technology, well, here's one way to get it there. How do we do it with the, either the staff we have, and they're real fast, or how do we get volunteers who are pretty computer savvy to volunteer and do it?"
Well, you can use volunteers, but you still have to have staff reviewing everything that's in there, because you have to make sure that what's being printed is a hundred percent accurate, because the last thing you want to do is put out misinformation. You know, I, I agree. I think people are looking for information. I don't know if the printed version is, is the way to go. I, you know, it's, it's expensive.
And my only thing that was on the printed version is, it's a way to get to the end of not having it. That you have a couple of them, and with the instructions there that, as of a certain date, it will be online, and direct them to where it will be.
Well, I, I just wonder if you have a printed version, it's not like you're going to send them to the people that want them. If you're going to make them available to come and pick up, are they going to really come and pick them up? So, that, you know, I mean-
All I'm saying here is this, just sending out facts. We did mail them, address and mail. We mailed them here. We mailed whatever this was on September, October edition, eight pages, cost twenty-three hundred dollars. So, if we mailed two of them, and that was twenty-five hundred, it cost us five grand to wean them off of getting a printed copy, and then from then on, it would be available online.
You know, to be honest, I, I said, "It just goes online."
to wean them off of getting a printed copy, and then from then on, it would be available online.
Uh, you know, to be honest, I, I said, it just goes online, if you want it, come and, come and get it, but now, Jeff, I just have a question, how is it going with, I think, uh, IT was supposed to, there was a proposal to come in to talk about all our technological issues and getting everything up to date, how, how's that going? Because that could be something that could be tasked for them to do, there's people that actually do this for you.
Would, would you mind if I made one comment on a previous thing and then go answer that question?
Yeah.
Um, I just, I would be remiss if I just didn't say that I completely, I would suggest we completely agree with what you're, what you said about the website, but it's, it's not for, for lack of desire, it's, it's not, it's, it's not, it really isn't, and, and we agree, it's just posting it, updating it, keeping, you know, every boil water, no sin, it's, it's tough enough just to keep that up, let alone get creative with pictures and, you know, and wow factors and things like that, um, I, I just felt like I, I need to say that. That has been done, that consulting service came in, they've got a recommendation, I just got the write-up from, uh, from Adam, as a matter of fact, the mayor had mentioned that before, um, and I had gotten him, I just wanted him to check a couple more things before we made a presentation to the council, but that would be in the next meeting or two, it's, he's got a full evaluation, or a full evaluation of our IT's been done, they've given us a percentage of what we should be spending on IT, what our problems are, where we need to go, we did budget a little bit more for IT this year than we have in recent years, as, as you know, um, but it's still just a tench over fifty percent of really what we need to get us just where we should be, not, you know, anything, any wow factors. So that is, that is really close to being a presentation to the council on our complete IT system infrastru-, or infrastructure, IT system, where we are and where we're going, and how much it's gonna cost.
Um, I think that, um, we, we're trying to do the city manager's job again, um, we will soon be hiring a new permanent city manager, and I think that this is one of the issues that he or she should be looking at and coming to council, making a recommendation. We're trying to drive this horse again, and it's really not council's place to drive this horse. One thing that history in this city has shown conclusively, the Beachcaster never succeeds as a volunteer effort, that's why it went in-house, where it was done professionally, it was a really good job, and it was, uh, consistent, and it was reliable, and the worst thing we can do is to do another start-stop, start-stop. When this thing launches again, it has to be right, and it has to be ready, and it needs to keep coming, and it is not council's job to sit here and try to figure out the, the details of how this will work, we need the city manager to, to, to tell us how this will fit into his or her scheme of things a, as the city manager. As for making this thing go all digital, I just don't see how we can possibly justify cutting off, um, those, that, that portion of our residents who just don't deal with computers, it just wouldn't be right. So the, I think the, the reality is that we will always be needing to reach some people with a paper copy, but again, I think we ought to put off this discussion until after the new city manager has had an opportunity to look at this and to come back to council and tell us how he or she thinks we should proceed.
Well, I, I think we need to give that person at least have direction that we want a Beach, I, I mean, I, I want a Beachcaster to get the information there, and I'm not saying we have to have no printed copies, but I'm more inclined to have the majority of, have few printed copies and people can get them when they need be, but I, I think the direction, not the how, but the direction comes from council, that do we want to have Beachcaster, and, and I think it's important-
Yes, at the right time, when it's ready, and that's not now.
So, so that, that was the question I asked, was do we want a Beachcaster? So I think, following up, rather than us debate this, as, as Cheryl has said, I think that the best thing to do would be to have what you've said, have the city, new city manager take a look at this, the resources, the staff, an assessment of the community as to what they want, with our intent to support that depending on what it is, and I think that's where we turf that for now. That's fine, and let's make sure we add it to pending issues, so it doesn't go away.
I don't think it'll go away. I don't think it'll go away.
That's fine, I'm just, kinda like your fence- Things don't get written down sometimes, they get, this may turn out to be like your fence ordinance, you know, and well-
Okay. Moving on to- Got it right here. Uh, agenda item number seventeen, proposed agenda items for city council, February sixth, we had a new, um, edition that was on our desk, so, um, one thing I, I, I need to say just from a staff standpoint, and I think this stuff is helpful, I know, and this is helpful, everyone, if we are gonna get backup information, I, which is important to have it, whether it comes from council or staff, I, I think that information needs to be to Lenore no later than Monday at a given time, earlier in the day, so that by noon, or at the time, so that she can get it printed, we can get it as council before we come here to read it and have the information. Um, getting big packets when we show up here is too tough, and-
It's useless, it really is.
It's just real tough. I want the information coming from any council person, I just want it in time to read, and the staff has an adequate time to get it ready for us, okay? Um, any additional, we're gonna have the salary survey added to this agenda, um, we are gonna have, um, John's gonna report on the COC, um, any other agenda item?
Yeah, I have a question, we've got on number eight, the, um, ordinance, um, I mean, the comp plan, I thought that we were gonna have a special meeting to resolve those, uh-
Yeah, I thought it was coming back, we were gonna have a meeting.
Yeah, so, we can't, this can't be on this agenda, because we're not ready for it.
Okay. There's some pending issues down here, do we wanna pick a couple of those that, um, where do we stand on this dock ordinance? Keep going.
No, I was gonna say, I don't, I don't have any idea, will we stay on the dock ordinance? I don't know, John would have to, to do that, I was gonna talk about a pending issue that, that really needs to be put on there.
Okay.
But we'll do this one.
Right.
Uh, that one was left off, but council, if you recall, that ordinance did not pass, and, um, Councilwoman God says she was willing to work with staff to, um, refine it, and, uh, I know you guys have had a lot of issues.
No, I, I was not gonna refine that ordinance, what I was going to do was to get with John and, uh, write a paper on what all the issues are, uh, relating to the, the dock issues. The problem with that ordinance that we didn't act upon was that, uh, it only solved one aspect, only addressed one aspect of the dock issue, and there are other aspects, and it was the council's feeling that we need to address them all at the same time, and so I'm not writing an ordinance, I'm gonna write a paper explaining what the issues are so that that can come to council, and council can then, uh, see what's going on.
You know, I would actually like to see our consultant do both, do not only that issue, but also the site plan issue, since we just hired a consultant, and really, we do need to shy away from, we're council people, we're, we're here to set policy and not do the work.
I'll repeat, I'm not setting policy, I'm writing a paper for clarification.
I'm saying that I think that we have a planning consultant now that really needs to look at that data and make recommendations for those changes to the Planning and zoning advisory board, and, and I also think they should also work on the, uh, site plan requirements of the LDRs as well, if that's what they were hired to do, and I think they need to be tasked to do that.
Works for me.
Works for me. Um, one other thing too, for, um, the police department has an issue that is not going away, and we can't not at least get a class one oh one, what we stand on, that's the ticketing system that is gonna be mandated for us.
RMS.
RMS, and if, we can keep pushing it, but it's not going away, so, the problem is, we're at a point where we're gonna have to do something on it, so if, with council's approval, I'd like to at least have a one oh one, Jeff, to explain, if somebody from the police department come in and tell us where they're at on it.
For the next meeting?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. And the other thing I just see here is, are we ready for quarterly, uh, budget update? Or when do that for the second meeting? Just think it's good that we keep in mind where we're at.
Yeah, we should.
I, I'm not sure we can get that, the, the orders are just finishing up, and, and finance has been really involved with that, so I'm not, I'm not sure that the first meeting in February can get that, and, and let's catch the direction, but if the second meeting with the other stuff we have-
All right, let's just make sure we keep it-
And I believe the, uh, RMS one oh one, since that seems to be the new, uh, the new, the new talk lately, I think RMS one oh one, we could probably get on the, uh, first meeting in February.
I just don't want it to go away, and then all of a sudden, here we are, I'm, we're almost there.
Uh, just down the road for a future meeting, I, at, at some point, I'm, I'm taking the lead, or at least trying to take the lead on the Communities for a Lifetime Initiative that we had within the city for a number of years, uh, so I will request that be on an, an agenda item down the road at some point. Again, I don't have anything to report at this point, we're kinda working on processes, but, uh, it'll be something I'll need to update council on and see if everything's all right with that.
Let's make sure, Jeff, we have that on our pending list. Seapole?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, Mr. Mayor, since we're talking about, um, next agenda item or meetings, uh, number eleven, goal setting for two thousand and thirteen, would, is there something that staff needs to have prepared for that, or is that just gonna be a council discussion? I just wanna be clear that, so I don't show up without-
Council thing.
Okay, I just didn't wanna show up without, without anything.
Um, any other agenda items for the council meeting?
Uh, I, I'm wondering what this, uh, workshop slash special meeting is scheduled, review K-Peg report, why are we having a meeting on that?
I, I put that on there, I would like, a lot of time by the department heads was spent on that report, and I would like, uh, the department heads to come in, and, and Ron has volunteered his time since he was on there to go through the K-Peg report in a workshop.
I've seen the K-Peg report, I'm not interested in a workshop on it, I, I know it's in the report.
Well, I am interested in it, I think the department heads have truly spent a lot of time on it, and it will feed into then that capital improvement plan which we so desperately need, and will be, uh, looking at reviewing soon.
This, one thing we said as we, obviously, passed January.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and we probably can do a meeting and one workshop in February.
Or we can do it in March, it doesn't matter.
Well, we can do one in February, you don't have to do two or three, we, what's the council wishes? Review that report, if anybody on council?
Are we, are we gonna, are we gonna go back to going to the departments and doing what we used to do before, when we went into the budget process? I mean, I think the levels of service that we used to do pretty much ties in with whatever K-Peg put forth, because we sat down with every department head, and we went through what the needs were for that department, I, I mean-
I think it's two different, here's what I think, it's two different things from this standpoint to me. The level of service workshop, I think, are great, we did them before, it really educates not only us, but the citizens that, what each department does, but I think this is different, this is a report that a committee that was formed put together, and a council person wants us to have that report open so we can look and read it, so, um, it's, again, workshops are up to council, um, I just would like to get a one workshop in in February, so we can continue knocking off some of this stuff.
Well, the capital improvement thing was one that I thought was, had some urgency to it.
Well, I, I would rather do that one first.
Well, Jeff, are you prepared at, in February to do, to do a capital improvement workshop? I mean, I know the work was in its plumbary stages, but...
The, I, I believe we would be in a position in February, because all of the department heads have provided their, their, uh, capital improvement plans, they've all been, been done individually, and then they put in a full spreadsheet to show each department all the capital improvement plan all the way up ten years, so it's all there with the department head capital improvement plan suggestions are, so as much as that presentation we could make to get the, to get it started, how much deeper, how much more we wanna go, I suspect would be a, would be a council direction, so that's where we're at, if that's enough, I guess.
My problem, not a problem, but that's fine, but isn't this also something that's gonna fall on a city manager, permanent city manager in, you know, if you look at the calendar, we're probably six, eight weeks away, so is that something we put off when the city manage, permanent city manager is here and do that for their benefit?
Well, if we're gonna, if we're gonna do that, I'd say we take both of these items and wait, because otherwise, we're gonna, we need to bring him up or her up to speed, whoever's gonna be coming in here, if we're gonna be going through these two items, and the direction is to wait, I'd say we wait on both of them.
Just, you know, if we do it, we're gonna get the information, but then again, I think the city manager is gonna need that information, so, just a suggestion.
Just an idea, I mean, you know, the councilman was asking for support for having the K-Peg report as a workshop, um, how we do that, I, I think we ought to do that, lady's making the request, I think that needs to be brought forward, um, how we do it, if we combine it with other things, I have no issues with that, whatever works best for council, but I do think we need to go through her request. And, and I'm, I'm, I'm not doubting what you're saying, and I agree, I'm just wondering with the timing, the timing, should we wait until we have a city manager in place, because otherwise, it's gonna, we're gonna have to listen to it all again.
Yeah, I, I would say, looking at it, if you could pick one of them, it'd be the K-Peg report, do that in February, capital improvement, wait till the city manager's here. If you want us to do it, so, I'd be, so, council?
I'm, I'm in it.
Do a K-Peg in February?
Do you already have something for the second meeting in February?
Well, I'm-
We're doing the quarterly-
Well, I'm just saying, this is not a me, uh, this is a workshop.
Workshop?
Yes, so, do we have anything on the books for February, Lenore, on workshops or anything?
No.
So we're, we're completely open?
Do you have your calendar at the back of your packet?
Yep. Um, thirteenth, eleventh?
Let me get a League of Cities meeting, I think, is on the eleventh.
Thirteenth?
Yeah, it'd be the, yeah.
Is that okay with everyone?
Um, I'm showing that, uh, we had scheduled a CIP, uh, capital improvement plan workshop on the twelfth at seven o'clock.
Hey, what workshop?
A capital improvement plan. Where did I get that from?
I don't know, I don't have it on there. I got a record of that, right?
The thirteenth puts open-
We did, we did schedule that, because I knew it was gonna be a conflict with a rec meeting, I think we did schedule a meeting on the twelfth.
Do we wanna cancel that meeting?
I remember, I remember talking about doing that, I don't know that, I don't know that we actually went forth having it scheduled, I mean, we put it on here to, to discuss that thing.
I have it, but I can't read my grade anyhow.
You wanna put that off till we get the city manager and put in on the thirteenth?
The K-Peg, or the twelfth, whatever. We're gonna put off the capital improvement one of the twelfth, and we're gonna do-
We can insert it on the twelfth and just take its place if you want. Or move it to the thirteenth, that way whoever's the rec board liaison can go to the rec board meeting, and nothing's scheduled for the thirteenth.
That'd probably be better.
Okay, is that, fits, fits with everybody? Okay, let's do it, all right, sounds great. Any other agenda item?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, just to be clear, as far as staff requirement for that particular meeting, um, you had indicated that Mr. Jagudis would be the presenter, if you will, so what, what, other than providing you with a copy of the report-
I would like, I would like staff to kinda be here to discuss their sections, and I don't know if you wanna time it, you know, every twenty minutes or something, a department head could come in, but I think it's really important that the department heads have their input and what, what their needs are.
Yeah, no, that, that, yeah, that, I, I agree, that's, they, they definitely would be here for that, no doubt, I just didn't know what other staff preparation prior to that you would, would need, I just didn't wanna show up here without the right stuff.
Okay. Moving on, gen, number eighteen, um, adoption of minutes.
Move to adopt the minutes of the December five regular meeting, the January third special meeting, and the January nine workshop meeting as submitted.
Second. Motion by Councilwoman God, second by Councilman Brimer, to adopt the minutes for December fifth, January third, and January ninth. Any further discussion?
Um, these came in the packets and I, right?
They were in our original one, and then I think each-
Cause I didn't, I didn't see them in my original package that came.
They came via email.
They were first sent by email? Yesterday?
You know, my email's not coming to in a timely manner, I mean, I don't get email, and then all of a sudden, one day, I'll check it, and there's like three days' worth of emails there.
Uh, on your phone or on your desktop?
On my computer, I mean, I check it every day, and some days, there's nothing there, and then I- I mean, I check it every day, and some days, there's nothing there, and then I check it, and...
You're turning it on, right?
All right. Any discussion...
I know it works.
Any discussion on the minutes? Any here and none? Lenore?
Councilwoman Gadd?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brimer?
Yes.
Councilman Gadd?
Yes.
Yes. Passes?
Any...
Question?
Yes.
Well, it's just good Jeff has another career lined up after that last conference.
Lenore, is there a retirement board meeting tomorrow? There is not.
Okay.
Are we still scheduled for the IAFF negotiation meeting at 6:00 on the 29th?
Yes, there's both meetings. It's a shade meeting for IAFF at 6:00, and then at 8:00 is a CRA board meeting. Or CRA meeting.
Any further business? Here and none, meetings adjourned.